Good evening, and thank you for viewing the April 20th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Watson is absent, and we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. So if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking remote public comment first and then moving to the in-person comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment remotely, please raise your hand or press *9 as soon as public comment is requested for that item. So next, it takes us to ceremonial matters, and because we are new to being in person and all the changes, I just wanted to kind of give a flow of how it works. So we will read the proclamation for whatever one is up first, and then after we've read the proclamation, we'll bring it down, and whoever's here to accept it will shake hands, give you the proclamation, and then if you would like to, you can go to the podium and make a statement. I think last time I forgot to invite people to the podium, so I apologize for that. So the first item, Item A, is a proclamation in recognition of World Tai Chi Day, April 30th, 2022. So this says, "Whereas, World Tai Chi Day is now celebrated annually in hundreds of cities in over 80 nations worldwide; and whereas, Tai Chi has been called 'medication in motion' by Harvard Health publication for the myriad of health benefits it offers. And whereas, numerous studies have pointed to the benefits of Tai Chi for stress relief, improved balance and coordination among the elderly, as well as improved behavior for adolescents with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. And whereas, World Tai Chi Day is meant to bring the community together to learn more about this gentle exercise, a series of mindful, relaxed movements that people of all ages and fitness levels can practice to improve health by boosting the immune system, increasing vitality, longevity, and well-being. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes World Tai Chi Day and encourages all residents to join on the Arcata Plaza at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 30th, to participate in this event. Community members can also visit worldtaicheday.org to learn more." I believe we have Glenda Heseltine and Candice Brulinger here to accept.
Microphone shy here. I just want to say, Mayor, just how wonderful it is to have the city welcome us, and it's been that way with the maintenance department's going to help us with the signs, and the farmers market director Laura is glad we're going to be out there. And any of you that want to come, it's all about slowing down and waking up. And those two things seem opposite, but that's what Tai Chi does. It brings together opposites. You don't need any practice to come out with us. Saturday, April 30th, at 10 o'clock, we'll be in the northwest corner. It's free, and it's just a great stress reduction practice. So any of you that are feeling a little bit uptight, come and hang out with us. And thank you again for the proclamation. I so appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. Maybe we need to get Glenda in here 15 minutes prior to our council meeting to get us all in the right space. So next, we have a proclamation in recognition of Bike Month, which is May of 2022, and Councilmember Matthews is going to read this one.
Okay, "City of Arcata, proclamation in recognition of Bike Month, May 2022. Whereas millions of people bicycle to work, school, social gatherings, and do errands because it is an inexpensive and environmentally sound form of travel, as well as an excellent form of exercise and family recognition. And whereas bicycling addresses the global problems of climate change, oil dependence, air and noise pollution, it reduces traffic, parking congestion, and noise, and increases physical activity and public health. And whereas, the City of Arcata promotes programs that encourage bicycling and educate cyclists and motorists on how to share the road, so all users feel safe. These initiatives earned Arcata, a bicycle-friendly community, Silver World from the League of American Bicycleists, and the city continues towards a goal of achieving gold-level bicycle-friendly city in the near future. And whereas, the City of Arcata has prioritized the development of a safe, connected, active transportation network through projects such as the Humboldt Bay Trail, Arcata Annie and Mary Trail, the Arcata Bicycle Boulevard, and the Bike Share Program. And whereas, the city's goal is to advance bicycle-friendly routes throughout town each year, and therefore invests in bicycle and trail infrastructure, including recently-approved active transportation program funding for planning, design, and construction of the Annie and Mary Trail from Sunset Boulevard to the Humboldt Bay Municipal District Park One. And whereas, in observance of National Bike Month and Bike Month Humboldt, the City and Humboldt Bike Month Coalition, bikemonthhumboldt.org, encourages residents and visitors to participate in various Bike Month activities in May to share community support for cycling. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that May 2022 is Bike Month throughout Arcata. The council encourages everyone to participate in Bike Month activities, encourages the installation of bicycle parking and other facilities to support Arcata's growing number of bicyclists, and encourages people to bicycle as a means of transportation this and every month, dated April 20th, 2022. Signed, St. Francis Salazar, Mayor."
I'm very, very happy to accept this on behalf of all area cyclists. Let me adjust this a little bit. Arcata is very unique in being so incredibly cycleable. It's a small place, even though it's rural, it's very well-developed. So I tend to see people driving around this town, and they look like they're lost, like they don't really know what they're doing. It's much easier just to ride a bike around, and it's so well-suited to that. And I'm really happy that the council and the city itself is recognizing this event and considering how well-situated it already is for that, and that it's going to stay that course until the day when hopefully we will be able to bike all the way from here down to CR and really take advantage of the natural splendor of this place in a way that is also sustainable and ecologically friendly. Thank you.
And for those of you that were just here for proclamations, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're also more than welcome to leave. So it's totally up to you. So next, we have early oral communications, and this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please make your way to the podium, or raise your hand if you are on Zoom, or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. So do we have anyone online? Checking online if there is anyone that wants to do public comment for an item not on the agenda. Seeing none. Okay, so no one online. Do we have anybody in person that would like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Salazar, and Councilmembers Matthews and Schaefer, Scott McBane. We've been part of the Responsible Growth Arcata Group. We submitted lengthy comments to you on March 31st and April 11th. And with the upcoming joint study sessions coming up, we wanted to elaborate a few of our suggestions that may be useful for topics for the study plan. So just wanted to get these to you ahead of time. So first, and also I'd like just to hand out kind of the written summary. Is it okay to put it on the paper? Just so you have some record of it. But there's three things, or maybe four things, that we wanted to suggest. We wanted to recommend that the study sessions discuss separating the general plan from the Gateway Plan process. Given the importance of these plans to the future of the city of Arcata, separating them has several potential benefits. More meaningful community engagement in both plans provides more time to do both better, and should enable city council members and planning commissioners to meaningfully participate in the general plan update, given the recusal issues with the Gateway Plan. Second, we recommend that the study sessions discuss an improved community engagement process compared to what's been done to date, where the community can contribute to developing the plan rather than reacting to something presented to us. So we recommend that the study session invite, also invite several leaders of the General Plan 2020 process and Plaza Improvement Task Force to help brainstorm a better approach that builds in more community engagement and rebuilds trust and is efficient to get the job done. Third, we recommend that the study sessions discuss the trade-offs and merits of the Gateway Plan being either a specific plan versus an area plan. In our April 11th letter, gave you some ideas of some of the trade-offs, but we're not experts at it, and we'd like to hear some experts talk about it in a transparent and clinical way. Thank you for letting us provide comments.
Sure. If you weren't finished, you could also pass it off to another member of the group to finish if you need to. Okay.
Okay, I wrote down on this one. It's really nice to see you in person, and I said that with the Planning Commission meeting, but also with you guys. We've met in the past individually, so it's nice to see you instead of hiding behind our Zoom screens at home. So anyways, I want to, I have, I have the, I have a prop with me. I have the City of Arcata's organizational chart. I brought extra copies for you guys, but I just kind of wanted to put out that the community sits very prominently on top of our organization chart, and that's something that we've all felt has been missing with this process. And there's been a lot of chatter that we're very critical of this plan, and that we want to derail it, and that is not true. I think this plan has a lot of merit to it. I think the ambitions of it are just really heartfelt from everybody that put it together. I think the process of it has gone astray. I think we really have to get community back as a driving point on this. We've said there's been community involvement, but I don't think it's been strong enough to really support what we are planning to do with the City of Arcata. And that comes from somebody that has been a big advocate for infill, and I really want to see infill done, but I want to see it done right, and that's been what I've been hearing for the rest of the community. I haven't heard any, I don't want Arcata to grow. I don't want to kill this project. I haven't heard any of that. I've heard we have to get this right, and it really has to be strong and to push forward. It really has to be coming from a community-driven effort. So I bought the organization chart for you, and I think if we get the community involved, just take a short breath, get the community involved, I think we can build the trust that I've been hearing that we've lost, and we can move forward. So I thank you all for what you've been doing. Anyways, thank you. And not instead of this way. I think the city's been looking at it upside down, so.
Hello. Chris Richards here, community member, worker. I don't want to take up too much valuable time of everybody, but it's nice that we can all be in person and I can be with the three of you so in this room. And I just wanted to thank you for your service, and it's great that you guys are following through and continuing to be a voice for the people and being the interface with staff and helping to make all this happen in the best way that we can. Anyway, that's all I had tonight, but thank you so much.
Councilmembers and to you staff, at this point, you're familiar with me, however, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is James Becker. I moved Humboldt County 38 years ago, attended HDU, competed collegiately in track and field and cross-country. I graduated in 1987 with a BA in social science. I worked for 12 years in construction, and for the last 20 years have co-run La Trachera with my wife Patricia Cambianica. Unfortunately, more recently, I've been identified as a NIMBY, uninformed, a plan killer, and recently as an old white property owner, and this divisive language has been used a number of times at a scoping meeting, at a stakeholders meeting, and more recently at the Planning Commission. The intent of RDA is to reboot a meaningful public engagement, so don't shoot the messenger. The drafting of the Gateway Draft appears to be more choreographed by the Community Development Department. That is my feeling. This has not been a community-led process, as occurred in the General Plan 2020. The committees and the commissions in this process have been siloed and expected to make recommendations off of limited information. Tonight, I ask the city council to call for a joint study session with Planning Commission and discuss the merits of the Gateway Area Plan versus a specific plan. In addition, removing the Gateway Plan from the Jungle Plan 45, and this can allow for the Gateway Plan and the General Plan 45 to move forward in independent timelines. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to come up for a public comment? Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward. So that brings us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of April 6th, 2022; B, bi-weekly report on general warrants; C, amend the contract in the amount of $397,773.62 to GHD Incorporated for professional services for the environmental documents, design, plans, specifications, and estimate for the Old Arcata Road Improvements Project; and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents; D, adopt Resolution Number 212-59, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata amending the City of Arcata drug and alcohol testing policy for commercial licensed drivers. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Can I pull Item C just very briefly?
Sure, absolutely. And is there any member of staff or public that would like to pull an additional item? Okay, so could I have a motion on the consent calendar for Items A, B, and D? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar A, B, and D. I'll second that.
And do I need to take public, is there any public comment on this? No? Okay. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So that takes us to Item C.
Yeah. So Netra, I just wanted to thank you. I did read through this, and what I really appreciate about this contract is that they definitely specifically called out outreach, public meetings, workshops, and so I just wanted to call that out. So, and then I'm just wondering, so we're amending this contract for now, so when it comes back to us at 60% again and 90%, there's probably going to be some more fluctuations in the budget?
At this point, we, oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and the members of the public. So I would say no. Based on the cost they have provided, it's for the final design. So even at 60%, 90%, and 95%, there will be no cost adjustment at this point, unless we find something we have to do based on the funding or other agencies required to do some additional analysis or additional technical studies needed for the project. In that case, yes, but as of now, I would say no. There will be no more budget adjustment.
Okay, and then where on the budget is this money coming from? I'm sure we went over it at midterm budget review, so I apologize if I'm...
So when you say where in the budget, currently, it's not showed as a line item in the budget, this amount, because the funding was not approved initially when we were doing the budget. But early this month, we were informed by our funding agency that funding has been approved for the project, so we will be making a budget adjustment, making sure the money is there, and then we'll be using that for this contract.
Excellent. Does anybody else?
All right, well then I would like a motion to amend the contract in the amount of $397,773.62 to GHD Inc. for professional services for the environmental documents, designs, plans, specifications, and estimates for the Old Arcata Road Improvements Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
I'll second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Oh, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Okay, so next is new business. So we have to adopt Resolution Number 212-60 establishing and approving a complete streets policy within the City of Arcata. And could we please have a staff report from our city engineer, Netra Katry?
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and members of the public, and people on the Zoom. So this item in front of you today is to adopt a complete street policy. The goal of the policy is to develop a balanced and equitable transportation system in the City of Arcata. This was brought to our attention, I would say, late last year by CRTP, and they gave us a policy and a draft, which was based off City of Sacramento template. So we, as a staff, reviewed it and made sense that we need to have this policy in the city as well. So since then, we've been working on this with TSC. So this item was in the TSC late last year, and as of yesterday, it was in the TSC. We received multiple comments on the policy from the staff, from TSC, and from some member of the public. We have incorporated those comments in the policy as of now. Our hope was to get that policy approved yesterday at TSC. However, at the meeting, we received additional comments from the committee members and from members of the public, which were valid comments, and we were not able to address at the meeting yesterday. So TSC has requested us to address those comments and bring it back to them at the next meeting, and following that, we'll be bringing that to the council for approval. So at this time, I'm just requesting to maybe get more public comments, since we are here. And if you have any questions, you can ask questions and get more comments, and then we'll bring this item back to the council for approval.
Okay, so maybe before we go to public comment, do we want to start with, do we have any council members with any questions?
Sure. So I was really happy to bring this forward with rocker. And so the one public comment that I've been getting, and something that was in the original ordinance that I would like to see a lot of the comments that we've been getting, is to take out that strive and just make it shall. I think that's an important language adjustment. Also, I was wondering what the reason was between, for having it be reviewed every three years, and why can't we, is it too hard to review every year, what the...
To respond to that, yes, we received that comment multiple times from some member of the public to review the project that we do in the city every year, to bring it back with what all projects we did which implemented street policy, which did not, and having tracked that. And our initial assessment based on talking to other public works director in other cities who have the similar policies, that it's too much burden initially on the staff, so we just want to be mindful before the policy is fully implemented, just maybe let's start with maybe three years, and then once this, if we decide there's not a lot of work, we can change that and we can bring back to every year if we can do it. But we just didn't want to add more work on the staff if we need to do more data information and recording. But you know, after having conversation yesterday at TSC and with staff, we can maybe bring it back to, instead of three, we can make it two years, just to start with.
No, that sounds great, and I think that this is coming before us at a really valuable time. It's, you know, Bike Month. I think it's also a good reminder that we haven't looked at the pedestrian and bicycle master plan since 2010, so I think this would be a great opportunity to revisit that as well. I know that something that the council felt really strongly about working towards this year was safety for pedestrians and bicyclists, so I'm really happy to see this come before us. Thank you.
Yeah, the only comment that I had too, just to reiterate a lot of the public feedback we were getting, was the same about that Item C, you know, just about that kind of flimsy language that, you know, shall strive, and it makes sense because there are, you know, laid out what the exceptions are, you know, pretty solidly in the plan. So, you know, we will apply it, and we will apply it within this, you know, framework that already exists in the plan. But just really thank you to the TSC for all the work that they've done on this, and to CRTP, and, you know, everybody who's brought this to us. It looks really comprehensive and great, and, you know, as Councilmember Matthews was saying, it's something that I think all of us are pretty passionate about, especially seeing, you know, recent incidents and accidents and losses in our community, you know, about lack of pedestrian and bike safety. So this will be great, and I'm excited to see what comes back again before us.
All right, that was very well said by both of you. So do we have any members of the public that would like to comment? We do have some online commenters. At this point, we have three. Our first one is Matt, and the next will be Colin. Go ahead, please, Matt.
Hi, can you all hear me? Hi, my name is Matt Simmons. I'm a member of the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. Yeah?
Are you able to go?
Yes.
Matt, I think they need to turn their, well, just tight, Matt. They're just going to turn their speaker on, and you're going to be good. We can hear you on our side.
Okay.
You're good now, Matt. Sorry about that. Go ahead, please.
No worries. Hi, my name's Matt Simmons. I'm a member or co-director of the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, a rocker. I want to state my strong support for this policy and thank the council for their comments, especially regarding the strive-to language and the reviewing it every three years. This is just such an important policy and sort of a common sense way to make Arcata more bike and pedestrian safe, just as we go about our normal business. You know, it is about to be Bike Month, and I'm glad that people like to bike here, but I can say that I've biked around Arcata and often felt unsafe, particularly on certain intersections and roads. And, you know, I think that adding this policy will do a lot to help make Arcata a better And, you know, I think that adding this policy will do a lot to help make Arcata a better place for people who get around on, you know, alternative modes of transport besides a car. So thank you again, and I appreciate the council member suggestions, and I second them, I guess.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next we have Colin, and after that will be Pat. Go ahead, please, Colin.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. As you know, we strongly support the proposed complete streets policy, and maybe it's not necessary, but I'll just go over a few of the reasons that we think you should adopt it. The first is that complete streets save lives, and they do this by providing safe ways for people to walk and bike, which prevent injuries and deaths of the kind that we've seen tragically recently, but also allowing access to the enormous public health benefits of active transportation, which also saves lives. Also, a radical transformation of our public streets to prioritize low-carbon modes of transportation is desperately needed to avoid climate catastrophe. And finally, adding bike, pedestrian, and transit improvements to routine street repaving and restriping projects, along with all the other projects, is by far the cheapest, easiest, and quickest way to get these improvements in place. And the difference really between the current method and this policy is that under this policy, bike, pedestrian, and transit improvements will be included in every project by default rather than added on a project-by-project basis. And if improvements for any of those modes is removed from a project, the city will have to justify that and allow for public comment. And so it really just kind of flips the script in an important and necessary way. That said, of course, we do have a couple of requests for improvement, and I'm very glad to hear the council members' comments about the strive to language and the progress reports. I also want to call out that the original model policy called for prioritizing improvements in disadvantaged communities. That language was removed, but we would encourage you to add it back in and specify that the city will especially prioritize disadvantaged areas like, for example, Valley West when implementing the policy. Finally, as you heard last night, the TSC decided it needed a little more time to review the policy, but partly because of the issues I just raised. But I guess I would urge you to just go ahead and adopt it. I think it'll take time to implement the policy, and the need is urgent, and, you know, if you make these changes now, there's a workable policy. The TSC can continue its review, and it's always possible, and indeed likely to come back for revisions at a future date. But I hope we just don't delay very long in moving forward with this critical policy shift for the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, our next speaker is Pat. Go ahead, please, Pat.
Hi, Pat Carr, resident of Arcata, and I was really excited to read that this policy was on the agenda for tonight's city council meeting. I think it's a really great thing for Arcata to be doing. I've been a bicycle commuter for a lot of years in Arcata, and now more of a walker. And I think that getting, one of the major things that we can do to get people out of their cars and into those alternative means of transportation, particularly bicycling, but also walking, is for people to have the perception that it's equally safe compared to driving. I think that safety concerns really put the brakes on a lot of folks being willing to make those, you know, comparatively short, under five-mile commutes, simply because they're concerned about parent drivers at stop signs and intersections, problems with potholes. I think the kinds of things that, as I understand, the complete streets policy would help us to address. And I concur with Colin that I think if something can be done in the Valley West area to promote that, Valley West, when I bike through there, it does feel a little frightening with the amount of traffic, and the bike lanes are a little bit narrow. I don't know if they're narrower than other parts, maybe it's just a perception that I have, but something that would enhance the bikability of that area would be great. Thank you very much, and I hope that you're able to move on this ASAP. It's an important step for Arcata to take.
Thank you, Pat. All right, for Zoom attendees, this will be the last opportunity, if you would like to speak on the complete streets item, so just checking one last time. And seeing no other speakers for this item.
Evening, city council, and staff, and audience members here and there. My name is Joanne McGretta McGary. I go by McGretta to call attention to that wonderful Swedish climate activist who is reminding us that we have to change our ways. I appreciate this proposal. I just want to remind staff particularly that in addition to bicycles as a other alternative means of transportation to the car, some of us have a different type of cycling device and/or there are skateboards, there are scooters, there are those unicycle things that speed by me. And not all bike paths are accommodating to the various types of alternative transportation devices such as I use on a three-wheeled tricycle. The slant on the bike lane sometimes is not sufficient. When we're also talking about people traveling to and from places on their alternative vehicles, parking is another consideration. Some people are carrying trailers with children or cargo or things like that, and right now we're relegated oftentimes to a corner next to a building with a little tiny slot to put our vehicle in. And so I would like to really have a seriously look at the concept of you come to go to a place like the Plaza, and whatever you're driving or riding or on, scooting on, or whatever, that you really consider a parking slot to be available for any type of vehicle that is in need of stopping there to do shopping or any type of event in the city. So in addition to the lanes and the plans for that, you know, parking and, you know, where people can put their devices, and they're not always a two-wheeled, easy, old-fashioned bicycle, so just thinking about that, I would like to, you know, announce that into the official record.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else? Okay, so earlier, Netra, you indicated that you'd like to bring it back at our next meeting. If that's, you know, if you're comfortable moving forward with suggested revisions, we can discuss that. If you're more comfortable bringing it back at the next meeting, I don't think that we're all very much seem to be on the same page here, so I think that it could probably fly through at the next meeting if that's better for you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments and everything, and you're willing to do it. Just out of the respect for TSC and the process, and since they have asked for it, I would like to maybe get their full approval before we bring it to the council. So just for, it's not delaying, just a month. It will be within the Bike Month, so I believe the TSC is on May 17, and the council meeting is on 18, so we will be discussing this on 17, and it will be scheduled for May 18 meeting. We'll bring it back with an approval from TSC, so that'll be good for everything.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we want to get it right, so I don't think that that short delay should be an issue.
Yeah, I would like to add back in, and I'm wondering why it was taken out about underserved communities and having that be a priority. Is there any reason that it was taken out of the original language?
Yeah, if I recall, the conversation was, you know, we have a plan, and we plan the projects based on them, based on the needs. We didn't want to discriminate one region from the other region. I think that was the reason why, not just prioritizing one area, you know, treat all equal, and then based on the road condition, we can prioritize the project. But I can see either way, but, you know, I think that was the reason that was removed.
Yeah, I do like that little piece, and I would like to see that added back in. And I also want to thank the Transportation Safety Committee, because this has been a long process, and I really appreciate all of their work. So I'm happy to wait for them to get their final go at it and bring it back.
I know something in my head is like telling me, I was like, no, I swear that was in here, but I think it was from a public email that I had received, and I said, yeah, that language sounds really good, and so I think that I might have either, something was in my brain, but I would like to see, you know, something along that line added back in. I know there's a few different places where, you know, it talks about equity, and I think just really recognizing how, you know, transportation is really an intersectional issue, and, you know, not all people have equal access to transportation. Walking, biking might be their only form, and if, you know, they are made to feel unsafe to do that in their communities, then, you know, we are preventing them from, you know, living their fullest life. And so I think that, you know, including something like that, and especially, you know, with the comments that we've heard about bike safety, you know, in Valley West, especially, yeah, like on the overpass over the 101 and like the roundabout area as well, there really could be some improvements to pedestrian and bike safety there as well. So, you know, if TSC wants to add that language back in, I think there's pretty big public support for that, and I think myself, I support that as well, and it sounds like Councilmember Matthews does too. So I would like to see that, yeah.
And I just want to say that I do appreciate Joanne's point about places to park your bikes or trikes or unicycles or whatever. Perhaps this is not the ordinance that that falls under, but that would be something that I would like to the council to kind of, you know, look at at a later date, because that's really important. If we want people to ride their bikes, they've got to have a place to put them, so.
So we can go ahead and move on from that item, and we'll see it back here after the next TSC meeting, so thank you. All right, that leads us to item B, to receive a presentation on the draft coastal land use element of the local coastal program. And we've got our community development director, David Loyah, here to present to us.
Evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Can you give me just a moment? I'll pull up a presentation. I do have one. Okay. You'll recall that in March, I brought a fairly lengthy presentation, some might call it exhaustive, some might call it exhausting, of the process, the history, and sort of what our next steps are moving forward to get our local coastal program, and I might slip and call it an LCP, approved and updated. And just for those who didn't attend, I'll just let you know that our current LCP was adopted in 1989, and so it's time, time to do that update. The Planning Commission is currently reviewing, they've had several meetings where they've reviewed the coastal land use element, which I attached again to your packet tonight, just so you'd have it handy, and it was also included in the March meeting. And they're preparing to, pretty soon, we're going to start looking at the zoning, and so we haven't really dug deep into the zoning piece of it yet. We're still at the policy level. This is probably going to sound familiar. It's a theme, you know, we start at the high level, the broad, big picture, and then we narrow down, and so that's what we're doing with the local coastal program as well. And so after the end of that meeting, I think one of the things that was really on everyone's mind was, well, what about sea level rise? We've gotten direction on sea level rise and the approach that the city should take from prior councils, and so we wanted to share that with our current council, which is, you know, composed of many councilmembers. And then at the end of this, I want to show how some of the policy work that we're doing, some of the ideas that we've had around, you know, how we understand sea level rise in our community, and how we will be able to adapt to it, is translated into land use. And so I'll share with you a couple of other things that we're doing in the coastal zoning ordinance and in the land use element that really translate that policy into practice. Before I get started, I do want to recognize that, you know, the, you know, the approach, the appropriate approach to sea level rise is very local, very localized. In fact, I was reading about Iceland earlier today. They're having the exact opposite problem. The sea levels are dropping in Iceland, and pretty soon, fishing villages won't be able to, you know, pull their boats into port. And so, and it's the exact same phenomenon, but there are other forces at work there, like the glaciers attract the water, the glaciers are pushing the landmass down, so they're actually springing up as the glaciers are melting. That's an extreme example of how, you know, Iceland's approach to sea level rise is going to be very, very different from Arcata's approach to sea level rise. Arcata's approach to sea level rise is going to be very, very different from Venice Beach's approach to sea level rise. We just have localized conditions that are really different. There are some overlap in what I'll tell you here tonight, but the approach to how you manage and handle that, that policy work is different in each community. Okay. So to the presentation, sea level rise projections, started this, I didn't get a new title for it, you know, what do they mean and how do we plan was kind of the one that I pulled off the shelf. I've given this a couple of times. So I'll start out by kind of identifying, you know, future conditions. This is a map of Arcata. It's grayed out because it's LiDAR imagery, and so it's really just reflecting the ground elevation. And then the colored patch that you see there is the, the colored patches basically projections for certain elevations of sea level rise. I've got a couple of notable areas identified here that you'll see recurring throughout. There's the clover leaf here, there's the three corners, and this is the wastewater treatment plant. So just real quick, super high-level background, you know, different approaches to estimating sea level rise have been done over time, you know, dating back. This is showing you, you know, just a range of different approaches that have been used. And typically, what it is, is that they feed certain data into a model. The model runs, you know, millions of times, and then it puts out an output of what a projected sea level rise is, and then a bandwidth around that of other projections, so it gives you sort of a confidence interval approach. Most agencies have kind of settled on a model that was adopted or developed by NOP and others, and so that's what you'll see in ours. But I just wanted to give you a sense for the range of different ideas about what sea level rise has been over time. And you can see these, you know, are from 2007 to 2013, and there's just a range of different varieties around, you know, what people have projected sea level rise will be. The reason why I point this out is because I think a lot of the times, we'll look at a map like the one that I just showed you, and we see elevation, and we think of that as certainty. It's going to be at that elevation. There's actually a lot of, you know, different opinions around what sea level rise will be, and we're always constantly updating that information based on information that we're seeing in nature and then feeding back into those models. And so it's a little bit of a fluid thing. It's not a, it's not a hard, you know, it's not like addition. It's a little bit more fluid than that. It's more complex. So when is it going to happen? That's one of the big things on everyone's mind, and I'll explain to you why we've kind of moved away from the concept of when and more towards the concept of how do we deal with it, how do we prepare for it? We know that it's coming, and the when isn't as important as the how. But I do want to, you know, dig into this in just a little, little bit. So I'm going to skip over some of this. This is background data that shows the different projection levels. But the couple of projection levels, and this is relevant to the discussions that we're having around the wastewater treatment plan as well, because these projections are, you know, mean different things. So for example, the RCP 8.5 model, not to get too technical, you don't have to remember this, is just the model that we're currently operating on. It's kind of the, we're assuming things are going to get worse. We're not planning on things getting better, and that's the model that we're using. This RCP 2.6 is kind of like, things will get better over time, we'll figure out how to, you know, improve the climate. And you can see that those two projections are pretty similar up until about 2040, 2050. And that's because there's already a certain amount of carbon greenhouse gases baked into the atmosphere. We know that we're going to get a certain amount of increase in temperatures in the planet because of that greenhouse gas that's already baked into the system. And so regardless of what model you use for these models, you get to the same point by about 2040, 2050, and then they diverge. This one improving, this one getting worse. There's also, it's worth pointing out sort of the extreme model, which, you know, creates quite a lot more sea level rise in its projection than these other models do. This is often referred to as the H++ model. Don't ask me what that H++ means. I don't know, but I can research for you if you're really curious. It's just the name of the model is the way I use it. But this H++ scenario is significant sea level rise even out through 2040, 2050, you know, whereas we're projecting to 2040, you know, 50 centimeters of sea level rise, and this, you know, it's doubled by 2040 with the H++. you know, it's doubled by 2040 with the H++. So it's extreme. It's like ice sheets melting kind of thing. You saw the bands around those. I'll go back and, you know, this blue line, for example, is RCP 8.5. And then here's the confidence interval. You know, it could be as high as this or as low as this lower dotted blue line. So that's the range. And so we started taking a look at that range. And instead of, you know, considering the range and elevation, I started thinking about, well, what does the range mean if these different elevation elevations happen over time? So imagine this yellow line is the projection and the red line is the upper limit and the green line is the lower limit. What that means is when you say, hey, by 2100, we're going to be at 13 feet elevation in sea level rise, according to the projection. It could be as bad as 16 and it might be as good as 11. You can also look at that and say, well, when I get to 16, that could be in 2100. Or if I'm on the lower trajectory, that could be 2200. So when we started talking about this as a community and wondering, you know, how quickly, how extreme should we move on sea level rise? How aggressive should we set our policies to, you know, address this impending threat? This was part of the conversation. Because if we say today in 2020, we're worried about something that's going to happen in 70 years, being as extreme as 16 feet in elevation. And if we got it all wrong and actually it was 100 years off, but we took land use rights away from people. We took, you know, the ability to generate revenues for, you know, individual private citizens, for the city, places for people to enjoy, you know, to live, to, you know, to grow, to prosper, et cetera, et cetera. If we took that away from them 100 years early, they would be kind of mad at we reasoned. And so we took this model, this thought process, and extended that over time, as I explained. And then we started thinking, instead of, you know, when is it going to happen? When are we going to hit 12 feet in elevation? Or, you know, when we get to 2100, we'll be at 12 feet of elevation? With this uncertainty, we said, well, how high a threshold can we protect against? Maybe instead of thinking of the when, we should start thinking about how reasonable is it to protect to 13 feet of elevation? 14 feet, 15 feet? What does that mean for the community in terms of investment? And how realistic, how feasible is it to do that? So we basically said, hey, look, there's some uncertainty there. The uncertainty doesn't end there. So let me share with you some of the recent projections. This was a 2018 report from the IPCC that the Intergovernmental Panel On Climate Change, thank you. And they put these, actually, I think this is from the Ocean Protection Council. Forgive me, this is from the Ocean Protection Council, 2018 report. And again, you'll see it's the RCP 8.5 model. So it's the high emissions model. And what this does is it shows you for every foot of sea level rise and elevation, what's the probability of that happening in a given year? And so, you know, let's go to the 2100 that we were, you know, just looking at. If we said, well, hey, look, you know, we're going to get, are we going to get one foot of elevation by 2100? The answer is absolutely. It's going to happen. According to these models, it's going to happen. We're going to deal with one foot of elevation. So we need to ask ourselves, can we deal with a foot of elevation? The answer is probably yes. But we're going to have significant problems with our infrastructure if we get six feet of elevation. So if we look at the six-foot column at 2100, there's only a 2% chance of getting six feet or more of elevation gain in sea level by 2100. And so the way I like to think about this is that, you know, if we were going to have a betting game, we were going to play roulette, and I said, I win 100% of the time. Do you want to play? You would say, no, I don't want to play. If I said, you win 46% of the time, do you want to play? You might think about it. I mean, those are pretty even odds. And so you're going to get three feet of elevation if you play that game. But to get to six feet elevation, if I told you, look, you win 98% of the time, are you willing to take the gamble if you win 98% of the time? My guess is you probably would. So the way that we translate this into how risk averse should we be thinking about sea level rise to six feet of elevation? If you're talking about citing a critical facility like a hospital or an evacuation site, you absolutely do not want to take that gamble. You're talking life safety. You need that resource in the event that something really bad happens. You want to plan to the most uber-extreme ends of safety. And so you're not going to take that gamble. But for a lot of other resources, like, you know, someone who wants to invest in a business, and they're going to take the 98% chance that they're going to win this investment over the next 100 years, 70 years, which is much, much longer than most people are making financial decisions based on, right? You don't sit down, you know, at the beginning of the month when you're getting ready to do your checkbook or whatever, you're reviewing things and you think to yourself, how is my checkbook going to look in 100 years? You just don't do that. When you go to make a significant investment, like purchasing a house or, you know, investing in your business, you're not thinking about what's going to happen in 100 years on that. You're wondering what your return on your investment is going to be, you know, maybe five or 10 years. And so that's sort of the scale, the difference in the scale and scope of the types of decisions that are being made, that we are talking about when we settled on the policy that we have currently, that the coastal land use element that's in your packet is based on. So this is another element of it. So it could happen, you know, far out into the future, even though we're planning for it to happen sooner. And then the probability of hitting those elevations has to play into our thinking as well. So two key pieces. So there's that 2%, 90%. Where is it going to happen? This is also a very critical question we need to answer. Where, what's going to be impacted by sea level rise? And the truth of the matter is that, you know, I'm going to tell you where it's going to happen, but the reality is, is that it's going to happen all over. If, you know, for example, we have critical infrastructure like a wastewater treatment plant that is impacted by sea level rise, then no matter where you are in your city, you're going to have to flush a toilet. And that toilet needs to have a functioning wastewater treatment plant. So we need to be real aware that this isn't just a localized phenomenon. This isn't something that we can just say, hey, the people that are in this zone should deal with it and it's their problem. This is, you know, our entire community's problem. So we need to think about it in that way. But the where is it going to happen? I'm, you know, reflecting back on those three points, the wastewater treatment plant, the cloverleaf on 101, and the bend in Old Arcata Road out here. And thinking about, okay, well, let's track those because I've got a couple of different weird images that I want to show you, kind of like that LiDAR image. So this is another way of looking at our LiDAR images. It just gives a heat map from low blue to medium, up to that yellow color, and then the high elevations are the red. So you can see that the low-lying lands, you know, kind of track along Samoa Boulevard. They kind of waver in and out a little bit. Come along Old Arcata Road, there's this weird little dip with a high spot right in here. So that's elevation. As you all know, this is where the bay ends, right here, currently. Bay is over here and this is all land. But in 1870, the shoreline was mapped. And in 1870, the tidal prism, so this was all bay in 1870. The tidal prism went all the way up to these areas you see as low-lying lands, cutting off at about yellow here. So that's where the bay used to be. And again, those three points, cloverleaf, the three corners and here. So what are the future conditions going to look like? We talked a little bit about this image to start. This shows sea level rise based on a bathtub model. This doesn't take into consideration any barriers that might be in the way of the landward progression of sea level rise. This just says, it takes, it picks an elevation on the landscape, goes to that inland extent of the landscape. And so there are ways in which this map is a little bit deceptive in that there are lower levels of sea level rise that would not overtop the existing barriers. Or if sea level is rising and we choose to improve those existing barriers, then you wouldn't have the inland extent come this far inland, even if you got, say, three feet of sea level rise, which would top, you know, some things currently. So we were using this early on, you know, 2015, 2016, to visualize the impacts of sea level rise. And you can see that this follows that same pattern, even this little jog here. So this is the low-lying lands that basically come up to about where the historic tidal prism was. So this was always a head-scratcher for me. 1870, the tidal prism looked like this. We dyked it about 100 years ago. We put up a bunch of dikes and now we have former tidelands that are dyked. And it's high and dry behind those dikes. And if you breached the dikes today, the tidal prism would go back to the original 1870 historic tidal prism. It would come up to about where it's shown here for, you know, six feet of sea level rise, in the pink there. So it was always a little bit of a head-scratcher for me. And Alderon explained it to me once that, well, it's because it's relatively flat up until that point and then there's a pretty dramatic, you know, increase in elevation at around that contour. And so even with six feet of sea level rise, we don't go much further inland than the 1870 historic tidal prism went before climate change started impacting the level of sea level to begin with. So that kind of tells you where the footprint of the bay would be. Please jump in.
So just to clarify what it's showing. So the pink is showing what it could, what it could be, that six feet.
Yeah.
But where it's coming up, you know, into the blue is what the reality that we potentially face.
Well, I think the blue is, it's been a while since I've looked at the data that made this map. I think the blue is three feet. And then I think this is six feet. Because I think this was one meter and two meters, basically.
Right. So is that pink area, because I remember, because the plan talks about that area, that's like the built-up little weird industrial zone? Is that that piece then?
Yeah.
Is that like on G Street?
So the, yeah, and we have an image that looks at that. But this is South G and H Streets right here. I believe this is Mount Trashmore, where my pointer is. So just for perspective. Okay, so I didn't get a slide put in here, but I did want to just bring this up real quick so you can kind of conceptualize this. So we know where it's going to happen. We don't know when it's going to happen. We know that it's going to, you know, potentially get up to six feet. But how often? Because that's the other thing. We look at a map like the one I just showed you and a lot of the times people think that, well, the water is always going to be at that elevation. Or if you think about like what the, you know, what the max elevation will be, the water's always going to be at that elevation. Well, we all know from looking at the bay, it's like, you know, it's breathing. The tides go in and out, you know, every day they go in and out. And then throughout the season, we have king tides in the winter, you know? So sometimes the tides are much, much higher. And so I think this is an important concept to think about because there, it's not like there's going to be a point in time, 2100, we cross that threshold and then all of a sudden, you know, disaster strikes because the water is always at that elevation. We've heard about, you know, sunny day flooding, for example, in Florida. It's going to be a slow progression. We'll be able to manage certain aspects of it over time. And even when the sea level rise, even when the sea level is at an elevation, where it does present, you know, relatively significant problems on a regular basis, you know, like maybe it's, you know, 30, 40 times a year in the winter, we're having sunny day flooding, for example, from the tides coming in. We may be able to manage parts of that up to a certain point. And so understanding that, you know, it's a, you know, we are going to have tidal cycles and that, you know, adding in the probability and, you know, these other uncertainties, we started forming a picture that looked a little bit more like, instead of saying, hey, the, you know, the ocean is rising. At some point, this area is going to be flooded and unusable. So let's just start bailing on it right away. Let's just devalue everyone's property and say, you know, you can't build out here anymore. Sea level rise is coming, you know, either in 70 years or 170 years. And it's a very low probability that it'll actually get to a point where it's going to flood your property. And it's only going to flood your property part of the year, but you can't do anything with it. And we totally devalued it by saying that. We said, well, look, let's start thinking about thresholds that we can protect to and try and design a program that hands off the responsibility to private landowners. If they want to invest in that property, they're taking on a risk. We file something on title that says, you acknowledge, you know, you're in this situation. When they try and sell the property, the next person will get notified through that title process that they're in the sea level rise zone. You know, if you hadn't heard of it before now, you know, here's your chance. And that was sort of the conversation, that taking all of those things into consideration and trying to think about how it impacts, you know, Arcata Bay and trying to develop a policy that was really responsive to that. So what are we going to do? This is where the council landed, again, because of the probabilities, the 2% versus the 100%. We started thinking of money over elevation of protection instead of sea level rise over time. You know, to protect to a lower elevation, you know, maybe to, you know, one and a half feet, you know, it's going to cost some money. To protect a, you know, five feet of sea level rise, it's going to cost a lot more. And we don't know when exactly those things are going to happen. We do want to have some estimate of time because obviously we want to be able to invest and have our investment last for a period of time that, you know, pays off the investment. But we, in order to do this, needed to get a sense for, well, how reasonable is it to do this? So we went through and looked at all the barriers to the landward advance of sea level rise, all the levees, all the things that we've built over time, et cetera, et cetera, and mapped them to elevation. And so we use this as sort of like a gap analysis. You know, we could tell, this is 14 feet, this is 14 feet, this is 13 feet. So we have, you know, 100-foot stretch of one foot in elevation rise to make it all 14 feet. And this is real back of the napkin. I don't want this to seem like it's extra rigorous or anything like this, but this is an approach to, you know, starting to think about how we can manage and mitigate sea level rise impacts over time. We did this gap analysis and identified the total elevation. We picked one, we said, look, we'll take six feet of sea level rise to protect to a 16-foot king tide. At a 16-foot king tide, there's still going to be the possibility that you'll have a tide that's higher than that, you know, slightly higher than that. that's higher than that, you know, slightly higher than that. But if you put six feet of sea level rise in your equation, and the probability of exceeding 15 feet in elevation is a 500-year storm event, so it's possible. You can get a bigger than 500-year storm event, but it's pretty protective for most instances. And that would also protect to a king tide of 13.7 feet. So looking at that, we kind of, again, this is real back of the napkin. We looked at the private and public value of properties and we looked at the sales tax generation out of the South G Street area. And we looked at the cost of protecting to 16 feet of elevation with the gap analysis. So you can see this area here with the blue line. So we just looked at this area. If we wanted to protect just this area, what would it cost? We came up with a back of the napkin estimate of about $15 million to raise everything here, so it would be protective of six feet of sea level rise. The value of the infrastructure, including the wastewater treatment plant, all of the infrastructure that would be protected by this $15 million investment is $140 million. And this is actually several years old, so it's more now, but it was $140 million then. And this area at that time, when we looked at it, was generating about $125,000 annually to the general fund for sales tax as well. So this, we reasoned, and the city council agreed at the time, said, yes, let's keep pursuing this as a strategy. This seems like a fair deal for us. This seems like a good investment. And if we could make, you know, anywhere between, you know, 70 to 170 years worth of, you know, buy 170 years' worth of protection for this area by doing this $15 million investment, that's an even better one. We don't know it's going to last that long, obviously. It's somewhere in, somewhere in the tea leaves. But this is sort of the background that we used to think about it. So as a result of that, we came up with this area. It's no longer called a protection zone. We worked on the language a little bit with our coastal commission colleagues. But it's basically the same footprint, and it encompasses the industrial properties just south of Samoa, South G and H Streets, and the wastewater treatment plant. Now, this was an early iteration of this concept. You can see we're proposing living shoreline around that, you know, and we have ideas for, you know, eco levees. Instead of having a hard seawall here, we would do something that was more gradual, more natural, that would provide habitat and so on and so forth. So these are the ideas that we've come up with. There's still going to be some impacts, though. You know, you have a creek, you have butcher slough running through here. In order to protect inland for butcher slough, you're going to have to install a tide gate. And so there's going to be an impact to wetlands. When you install a tide gate, you put it into an area that is a wetland. And so we've been talking about, you know, how does this work with the coastal act? It's one of the big challenges that we're, you know, still a little unclear on, still continuing to work with coastal staff to try and find a solution. So all of these things, I just want to be real clear, you know, this whole policy direction is a little bit off-center for where the coastal commission's policy guidance would go. Because the coastal commission's policy guidance has typically been, start retreating as soon as possible. And the best way to start retreating is to not let people do things with their property. If the property gets damaged, don't let them rebuild it. If they, you know, want to expand, don't let them expand. No new redevelopment, so on and so forth. But you can imagine a neighborhood where, you know, one by one, the houses start going dark and then, you know, get boarded up, and then they just sit there because you won't let them do anything with that property. You can imagine what a neighborhood like that would feel like. So we reasoned it would be better to say, we're going to let you invest in certain ways. You know, we don't want to see a huge population increase in areas that are particularly, potentially threatened by sea level rise because, you know, that's people's, you know, primary asset a lot of the times, or, you know, it's putting people in a vulnerable situation with, you know, their place of, you know, where they live. But, you know, there may be other uses that, you know, that are less critical to protect. And so if someone wants to set up a business down there, you know, sure, they may lose the building eventually, but they will have had, you know, 20, 30, 40, 100 years of business activity on the site. The other thing that we did, which was a little unique here, and I'll share this with you in a little bit, this is, I'll share the map with you, but we tried to look at like creating new land uses down there. So right now, I mean, just, you know, mentally walk down, you know, South G Street. The predominant land use is industrial. And of those industrial sites, many of them are really kind of on, you know, either like the scrap end of the spectrum or, you know, kind of just the boneyard end of the spectrum. And so there's a lot of industrial things, you know, old rusty trucks with crankcase fluids and et cetera, et cetera, that are sitting in an area that's going to be subject to sea level rise. And you can imagine someone's motivation to go and move all that crap off their property. Did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. You know, when, you know, when there's no financial benefit to do so. And so we have some land use solutions that we've come up with to try and push people in the direction of investing in those properties in ways that don't increase the risk to people and property and life. Okay, so let me show you that map, and I'll show you one other map, or sea level rise inundation map. So this is the coastal land use map that is in the, in the draft form right now. And some of these land use designations I'm noting are not updated. I'll just walk you from the north side of town to the south. So here's Spear and Alliance. The blue dotted line is the coastal zone boundary. You'll see that throughout the map. And the red line is our city of Arcata boundary. Around this area here, the coastal commission, I'm sorry, the planning commission said, hey, look, you know, these are residential, very low and residential low density right now. We want to see these upzoned to allow for at least residential medium density zoning here. So this is one of the areas through the update to the coastal plan where we'll see upzone potentially, if the council decides to, you know, to adopt that, where you could have densification that's outside the gateway area. I know we've been focusing a lot on what's happening with the gateway area, so I'm doing a little bit of overlap and, you know, mash up here to share with you some of the areas that are proposed for rezone elsewhere in the city. So residential medium there. Moving down here, these properties are in the coastal zone. We're not proposing to change the zoning at all, just public facilities, agricultural. The proposal is to zone the area that's in the gateway area mixed use. This will make a simpler transition for the coastal commission if they've approved this as mixed use already, because the gateway area plan is basically mixed use. Some densification raising densities in this area. And then crossing over Samoa Boulevard here, we have some, a mix of industrial general and industrial limited, mostly industrial limited, that we're proposing to convert entirely to industrial limited. We don't need new heavy industrial uses in the area that's potentially subject to sea level rise. And then the conversation that we're having with the planning commission right now is around this CCCV zone. This is an overlay zone that would allow for coastal commercial visitors serving type uses. Those kinds of uses could be, you know, restaurants, they could be, you know, stores that sell, you know, retail, or we could see, you know, uses like RV parks. So I use the RV park as a perfect example of a land use type that if you took one of the scrap yards and you said, hey, why don't you turn this into an RV park? They'd be making as much or more money than just having stuff piled on it. They would clean the site up, they'd remove all that, you know, crud that's on the site that's potentially going to impact the environment if it gets flooded. And then they'd have a business that would generate revenue both for them and for the city. And so it's kind of a win-win-win. So this coastal commercial visitor serving is proposed in the current land use as one of the policy implementations to try and help create new investment in the area that also helps us with a long-term strategy for climate adaptation. I'll point out a nuance around this zone that came up at our planning commission meeting last time. One of the planning commissioners mentioned that, you know, all of these residential uses here, this is all residential medium or high or something, medium-high, I think it's listed as. You know, these residential uses, you know, people are living in these. And if you say, well, you can do CCCV, and someone just kicks a bunch of people out and then turns it into a hotel, what about that, you know? And so, you know, obviously that doesn't create equity, and we, you know, are striving to create equity. So we've got a couple of conversations going. One idea is to, at least initially, to exclude this area right here that has these residential uses. Here's a zoom in of it, actually. These residential uses, a lot of these are homeowners. You know, there's a lot of homeownership in this neighborhood, higher than the average in Arcata. And there's a higher proportion of, in particular, Hispanic in the census homes. And so, you know, here's than the rest of the city. So here's an area where, you know, we need to be sensitive to how we treat this. We can't just like come in and, you know, apply the same kind of incentives for converting uses as we might apply elsewhere. So one idea is to, you know, cut this, cut a hole out here and don't allow that to happen just in these residential areas. Another idea that was floated in a meeting recently that I really liked the idea of was to require, and, you know, we still need to look into whether or not this is legal, but to require relocation. Typically, if the city is involved in a project, you know, we have financial assistance, or if the state or feds have financial assistance, you know, for instance, one of our low-income housing projects. Anyone who's on the site before the project starts would have to be, receive relocation assistance. They'd have to be moved, paid to move their stuff to another house that has, you know, similar, you know, or better quality of life and, you know, that they can afford. And so one thing we're looking at is if we leave the CCCV overlay on this, can we also require someone converts, require them to relocate? I also wanted to make the connection, I've said this before, but I just want to bring it home again, because it is an important piece of our adaptation strategy. A lot of the times we think about these things, you know, in very compartmentalized ways that, you know, sea level rise is going to happen here, therefore, you know, we're focusing on solutions here for these properties. We need somewhere for this, these uses, all of these uses. And this area right here is the, you know, most densely populated of all the areas that are subject to sea level rise. But all of these uses need to move to somewhere else in the city eventually. You know, we don't want to necessarily just lose these uses. These are, you know, our community members, these are our businesses. We want to see them move elsewhere in the city. And so right now, we're working on the gateway area plan and trying to allow for, you know, really, it's a mixed use, you know, high-density environment that, you know, could start to translocate some of these uses. There is a concept called transfer of development rights that's used in many different contexts. I'm not exactly sure it applies in this particular setting. And I can get into that in more detail, more of the technical detail if you want me to, but I think that, you know, we can continue to look at that as an alternative, and if something, you know, makes sense, we can adopt something similar to transfer of development rights. But I certainly think that, you know, there's going to be a natural progression as things densify over here, and we have opportunities for moving folks from, you know, this area. We can work to, you know, make those connections. You know, the city can continue to facilitate that sort of transfer of land uses over time. And so the gateway area plan, even though it's not in the sea level rise inundation zone, is really a critical part of our adaptation strategy, densification elsewhere. I'm going to say the same thing about the downtown area when we get to, you know, planning for that opportunity zone. You know, I think you'll probably see fewer, you know, industrial uses in the downtown area and even, and, you know, so we need to have a place to move these industrial uses. But you'll see a lot of commercial uses in the downtown, probably. And there are many down here. So we could see, you know, real nearby opportunities for adaptation planning that doesn't, on the face of it, look like adaptation planning. Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to show you was the sea level rise map that's in the document now. I'm going to zoom way out to start so you can see that we're following that same contour. These are the low-lying areas. And within those low-lying areas, the color is shown here. We're basically showing the base year, 2012 base year. So again, I'm going to zoom back out just to make the point. In 2012, if the dikes were breached, the inland extent of the water would be here. Okay? So it doesn't go there because we've historically done something to stop sea level rise, or to stop the sea from intruding on that space. And then the yellow, the upper end, is basically 4.3 feet of sea level rise. The reason why it's on odd numbers is because we translated the metric, we used the metric and translated that into imperial. So the last thing I wanted to show you here, because the coastal commission is going to be very interested in, you know, when is this going to happen? We've kind of made a little cheat sheet here. So instead of saying, you know, hey, sea level rise is going to be at the yellow elevation by 2100, what we've done is we've taken the report that we got from Jeff Anderson, and he projected out, you know, the elevations for different event types. So mean monthly maximum water, this is the average high tide, average high high tide. The mean annual maximum water, this is the average king tide. In 2012, the base year the report was done in, those were 8.4 and 9.4 feet, and 100-year event was 10.7 feet. So with 100-year event, you're going to see a little bit of flooding around the edges of the bay. If you had a meter of sea level rise, then the mean monthly maximum water would be 11.7 feet, a little bit higher than our current 100-year. And the 100-year would be 14 feet. So even with a full meter of sea level rise, you know, going back to the slides I showed you earlier, for $15 million, we could protect that. And then to get at the time issue, we put in the 2100 probability, trying to really emphasize the, you know, this idea, the concept that, you know, the probability is low. So we get to this in 2100, but it's only 2% chance that we get to that in 2100. By 2100, the chance of getting a meter and a half is 0.2%. And to get to two meters, it's less than 0.1%. So we kind of threw that in there for a talking point with the community and the coastal commission when they review this overall strategy that we have that is a little bit, like I mentioned earlier, off-center to what they're used to seeing or what they're recommending jurisdictions do. That's my presentation.
So before we jump into questions, I have a question just on procedures. So, I mean, earlier you mentioned that this is all by the direction of the previous council, and the three of us are all new and not on that council. So I guess that's one of my questions, are you looking for a direction from us? Like, yes, we're on board with this, or no, we think we should go a different direction? Is that part of this discussion today?
You know, certainly, you know, if you want to start having, you know, conversation about, you know, shifting gears, it'd be good to know now because we are basically near the end of drafting these documents based on the prior direction that we've received. And, you know, for all intents and purposes, we'll at that point be ready to submit them through the approval process. I think the primary goal here, I mean, obviously, you know, council is the decision-maker. If you want to shift gears, we absolutely should do that. But I think the primary thing was to just start getting you familiar with some, in particular with sea level rise, which is the biggest issue that we have going on in our local coastal planning, to get you familiar with the concepts and make sure that you're still comfortable moving forward that way.
So for me, I'm in agreement with what's going on here, and, you know, the others can weigh in. But I do, even though it's a different approach than the coastal commission would like or recommend, I think it is a good approach for our area, and I like the practicality of what you've all come up with to this point. Going to that CCCV overlay zone, I am inclined to kind of be on that page with the commissioners who have brought up that maybe we should treat that separately. I think that as long as we're in the housing crisis that we are in, I think that we should possibly consider that area to be different. And then as things change and there is more housing available, perhaps we revisit it at that point. But considering the crisis that we're in with housing, I think it wouldn't be prudent to expect to move all those people anytime in, you know, the near future. And the future comes upon us quite quickly, as we all know, and the older we get. So, yeah, that's my, those are my comments.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Loyah. That was a lot. My question is, so those numbers were based on 2012 numbers, which was 10 years ago. And we're in, I think, much more of a climate crisis now than we were 10 years ago. So, I mean, how does that track with what we just heard?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the model that we had Jeff Anderson, Northern Hydrology Engineering, work on for us, had to pick a base year elevation so that we'd have a starting point to put in the model. Once you put that starting point in the model, and then you bake into it the, you know, the other variables that you need to determine, you know, future sea level rise elevations, then it spits out the other data. And so, again, we did have him run the typical model that shows you elevation by 2100 and et cetera, you know, time series model. But we also had him run a model that was based purely on, you know, elevation. So that's where this comes from, up in the upper right-hand corner, showing just, you know, what is it if we hit a half a meter? What is it if we hit a meter? And so on and so forth. So we're not relying on the 2012 data for, you know, it's not like it's dated. It's just a starting data point, and it tells us, okay, this is what the elevations of the ocean or localized bay, actually. This is done for our local bay area. It's not, it's not even like most of the table that I showed you earlier with the probabilities on it, that was for the North Spit buoy. Jeff did the work on really hyper-localized conditions. And so that 2012 base year just tells you what it was in the past, and it doesn't have, except for the fact that it was a starting point for the model, it doesn't have anything to do with the future. So it's okay to keep that 2012 data point in there. Does that make sense? I feel like I went around in circles and didn't really explain it very clearly.
No.
If it's not clear, let me try again.
It makes sense. I just, you know, frankly, in a climate crisis, so I'm just worried that, you know, things are going to get a whole lot worse than we expect them to if we don't change our ways.
Yeah, no, I agree. And that's part of the reason why we went for, you know, the elevation approach instead of the time series approach. The time series approach, you're constantly having to reevaluate because it's based on what the elevation is going to be at a certain point in the future. And if the projections get higher, we're saying, well, no, we need to put more greenhouse gases into the model to, you know, arrive at a higher elevation. You're constantly updating your document to try and keep track of those changes. Our document is completely resistant. It's completely vulnerable, not vulnerable to all those changes that will happen in the future to the model because it's just purely based on elevation. Now, this piece, you know, we'll give the caveat that this piece may change because...
From the online community, I'm not seeing what you're talking about.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sure our IT guy will catch up in just a second. I can't control that. The probability shown here, those will change over time as the models change. And so we would still have to update this piece of it. And the reason why we put this piece of it in here is because we know that the coastal commission is going to want to know something about, well, what's going to happen in 2100? What are the elevations going to be? And so we can tell that story here.
Okay, I'm wrapping my head around it, but thank you. I'm wrapping my head around it, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I'm wondering, Councilmember Matthews, if you might also be referring to like, to the earlier charts that were also, because that was my question, because when you're looking at, you know, the bar charts or the trajectory, you know, we're only going, you know, they're older numbers. So that could have been part of the question.
Exactly. These were studies that were done, you know, this was a study done in 2007. They came up with this as a range, you know, this one was done by the IPCC in 2013 and they came up with this range, you know, slightly higher projection and a bigger range. The only point to this was that, you know, that there have been many different models. They've all come up with different solutions depending on how the model is used. And we have sort of resolved as, you know, the IPCC is tracking the not at all model that is pretty, generally speaking, that's for a global model, that's the best one to use right now. And it does get worse over time. We're constantly finding new information, new feedback, verifying the model, checking it and making sure it's working properly. And we're finding that it's not, that we have to constantly just edge up ever so slightly our estimates, which is frightening. I mean, it's scary, you know, it's an existential crisis. And so those things will still be being tracked and changed and we'll be able to see that real-time information outside of the document and be able to make decisions, you know, based on that information outside the document. It just, for our policy strategy, we wanted something that would be a little bit more stable, a little bit more, you know, malleable to, or, yeah, stable, I'm sorry, that it would stay the same. We wouldn't have to continue to update the document.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So how does our plan, you know, differ from what the Coastal Commission wants us to do? And then the second question of that, because I remember you spoke about, when we talked about this last time, that there, you know, there's a coastal element and then there is one that is certified by the Coastal Commission and that we didn't reach that far. So, I mean, how, if what we are planning is different than what the Coastal Commission wants us to do, what are the drawbacks of that versus the benefits to our community? I'm sure you could give us an hour-long presentation on that question probably, but yeah, I mean, how does this interact with this idea of getting certified and what does that do to us?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think the simplest way of saying it is that the Coastal Commission has the most conservative approach possible. They would rather see the most conservative approach possible. They would rather see communities adopt policies that immediately start divesting of areas that are, you know, in those mapped inundation zones. And so, you know, so they would want to see policies, for instance, that would say if your house, you know, or your structure is demolished by a natural event, that you can't rebuild it, that you can't expand your property, that if you have vacant property, you can't build something new on it. Because they don't want people investing in an area that has, you know, potential vulnerability in the future. The reality is that, you know, if we zoom out a little bit, if we stop, you know, thinking of this, I mean, it's an existential crisis. It's big. It's happening now. We're trying to figure it out, you know, and so we're all very focused on it. But, you know, earthquakes are also a big concern in our area. I mean, we live at the triple junction and when that thing goes, you know, it's probably going to demolish everything on the north coast. That's a huge, big, scary thing. When I think about that, I get, you know, I lose sleep. But we don't say to people that you can't build in Humboldt County because at some point the triple junction is going to go. We say to people, you need to build according to appropriate building code standards to make sure that, you know, we, to the best we can, don't lose life in a big earthquake. And we have building standards, seismic codes that are dependent on your area and we apply those. So using the same, you know, same logic, you know, the Coastal Commission actually qualifies sea level rise as a hazard. Here's another area, and maybe it's just, you know, me being picky with the language, you know, because I try and distinguish between a hazard and an environmental condition when I think about sea level rise. Sea level rise is something that's happening in the environment. The level that the ocean is at has a relationship to certain hazards like tsunami, coastal flooding, but the sea level itself is not a coastal hazard. And so we've kind of, you know, disambiguated those two concepts and really think of sea level rise as separate from hazards. The reason why I...
Coastal Commission sees it as a hazard.
Yeah, the Coastal Commission calls sea level rise a hazard. And so we, you know, we, you know, use slightly different terms to describe the same thing. Sea level rise is an event that is happening in the environment that is changing the way that coastal hazards interact with, you know, our community. And so if you look at sea level rise itself as a hazard, you adopt a hazard mentality to responding to it. And hazard mentality to, you know, is typically very conservatively oriented. When there's an event, you know, a house fire, for example, when there's a house fire, you know, hazard, you know, people who specialize in hazards, the fire department, they come and deal with it and it's a big deal. It's a really big deal for that particular structure at that particular time. And so we pull out all the stops and we respond in that way. We can't operate our, you know, our planning timeframe, we can't operate a planning horizon based on, you know, hazard mentality. When you look at the projections, for example, you know, the Coastal Commission would like us to evaluate this H++ scenario on all projects. And, you know, it's, the H++ scenario, I mean, you know, and I can, I don't have the data to show you at this point, but it's so significantly higher than normal projections for sea level rise that if we said, look, we want to base our sea level rise policy on H++ instead of thinking about, you know, evacuating or planning for withdrawal from sea level rise south of Samoa, we would also be planning for retreat from the building we're sitting in right now. And we'd be thinking about moving up to the hill slopes behind us here and annexing east. Because if we got 30 feet of sea level rise, we're underwater right now. So this is a planning document and we're trying to focus on planning scenarios. There are lots of what-ifs that this planning document doesn't deal with. It's not intended to. It certainly makes a nod and recognizes that H++ is out there, but we can't plan a 20-year plan or a 50-year plan even using the H++ scenario. You know, I sincerely hope, I mean, I know we're on course to, you know, try and make some change. There's lots of, you know, globally, there's lots of commitment to, you know, to the climate crisis. There's not enough at this point. But, you know, my hope is that we can do a planning scenario that takes into consideration realistic, you know, responses to planning horizon type changes to our environment. If we're wrong and we're on the H++ scenario, we really wouldn't have lost much, to be honest with you, because if sea level rise, if we have, you know, collapse of an ice sheet or something like that and we get three feet of sea level rise tomorrow, we're not going to be worried anymore about whether we made the right decision on a planning document. I mean, there are going to be catastrophic failures all around the world. And so we are working to try and create a document that fits within the parameters of the type of events that it's intended to address. And we're not going beyond that. We're recognizing we're not going beyond that. This is a very long-winded response to your question, what's the difference between the, you know, what the Coastal Commission would want to see and what we're proposing. But it, you know, gives a little bit of the background for why it's slightly different. They would rather see us immediately withdraw. We've said, hey, there are other things that you need to take into consideration. And I would encourage you to read the sea level rise chapter. There's about two or three pages that really outlines the rationale for taking a more global approach to our policy than just focusing narrowly on the one element, the sea level is rising. We need to consider, you know, how's it going to impact the people who own property in that area? If you come out as a, you know, as the, you know, if the government comes out and says, those properties can no longer be developed, the value of those properties drops to near zero tomorrow. You know, and so do we want to have that kind of economic impact? Do we want to have that kind of impact on people's lives? You know, if you own an apartment building down there, how inclined are you going to be to invest, improve, you know, complete repairs on that apartment building if the government just came out and said it's valueless? You might think to yourself, well, I'll just, you know, milk these tenants until, you know, they've decided to leave and then I'll walk away from the building and it'll be the city's fault, problem. So we're trying to craft a solution that, that looks at these long-term changes that we're going to experience and uses the entire time to step into the solutions instead of saying, you know, the house is on fire, let's, you know, you know, run away now. So those, it's just kind of a different, different approach. And I feel like, you know, the city is taking into consideration, you know, a lot of other sectors and how the policy affects those as well as, you know, how that policy affects, you know, the existing community in that area, the infrastructure in that area because of the rising seas.
Kind of along those lines, I realize that each city is different and we're taking, you know, we're looking at our, you know, doing, taking a unique approach. But have you, are you aware of other cities that are doing things similar to what we are, that are going somewhat against the recommendations of the Coastal Commission and taking the approach that we are?
I don't have a good example for a city that's doing exactly what we're doing. Many of the, many, many cities do not. I'll just tell you that most of the times, you know, a couple of recent LCP adoptions have been driven by the desire of a city to do a particular project. And so they were under, you know, sort of under the, over the barrel, so to speak, you know, and the Coastal Commission said, well, you know, we're only approving this in your LCP. And so they took it because they wanted to get the project done. But, you know, and I do think that it's important to have the conversation, you know, with the Coastal Commission. We've been working, I mentioned last time that we're working real closely with coastal staff on this update. And, you know, when Kristin Kenyon was our point of contact at the Coastal Commission local office, you know, she would frequently tell me, well, I don't know if the Coastal Commission will be able to approve this, but here are some suggestions for, you know, modifying the way that you're, you know, describing it or, you know, here's some suggestions to, you know, consider including so that it has the best chance that it possibly can. The protection zone was an example. Instead of calling it a protection zone, I think it's now called, you know, the second retreat zone. You know, so we're describing how globally, it's not just like focused narrowly on the one area and it's going to protect, you know, and because the Coastal Commission is hearing from many communities, you know, we're just going to defend, you know, and then there's this battle over, you know, just defending. We actually have a retreat strategy. It's just on a much more methodical and slower timeline. And so, so I think that it will be, you know, maybe it's not coming, it doesn't pair well with the recommendations that you're seeing in the guidance that they're putting out. But I do think it's a conversation that, you know, from the local side, many locals are saying, you know, we want this. And the Coastal Commission wants us to update our LCP as well. They're, you know, very interested in local jurisdictions who have 20, 30-year-old local coastal programs to get them to update those. And so, you know, my hope is that, you know, through this mutual desire to, you know, come to a conclusion, we'll have some negotiations that, you know, salvage the core, which is to, you know, to take a more, you know, stepwise approach focusing on, on trigger points that are defined by our ability as a community to meet those trigger points. I can sit here today and tell you that we can protect the 16 feet, $15 million. And that makes sense and let's build a policy based on that. If we find out, you know, 10 years from now that, no, it's actually going to be 15 times 100 million dollars and we were off by 100, you know, a factor of 100, we might want to rethink this approach. But I suspect that we're not going to be off by that much. I suspect that, you know, we'll find that we can continue to, you know, make changes as we have in the last 100 years and will do in the next 100 years to make changes to address coastal flooding for a coastal town. We always have been.
I'm going to ask you an easy question now. Can we get these slides? Can we have these sent to us just so I can...
Absolutely.
Look at these various graphs and numbers and stuff. It'll be interesting to take a closer look, but yeah, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, just like, thank you because that's, I took like two pages of notes. I'm, that was a lot of information. It was clear and, you know, it's, it's something that I feel like a lot of people would probably think like, yeah, that's kind of dry, but like, I don't know, it just, the way you talk about it with such enthusiasm, I'm captivated. So it was, yeah, a lot of great information. Thank you, David.
So what do you need from us right now?
If you want to open it up for public comment, that'd be great. And then, yeah, I'll just, I'll keep you updated as we're, you know, coming up with the zoning. And if there are other topics that you want me to present on, or we can have a study session as well to dig into them.
All right. And as a community, we have gone against the grain before. If we hadn't, we would not have our very special wastewater treatment plan. So this is not unique for us. Okay, let's go ahead and open it for public comment. There'll be three minutes and we'll start with people online.
We do have online speakers, call-in, phone call-in. Go ahead, please. Can you try again? Hello, go ahead.
Oh, I think I just...
You're good. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Hi, this is Jennifer Kalt. I'm the director of Humboldt Baykeeper. And we have been following sea level rise and the LCP update for the city of Arcata for many years. In fact, since the previous one was left to die on the vine because there could be apparently no agreement between the Coastal Commission and the city. So I'm just, you know, hoping that this can go a little bit better than that one. I really want to put the idea out there that we need to be planning for the nearer term in terms of capital improvements and the sort of projects that take cities and counties and other governments many, many years to plan. And the reason that I bring this up is that the Highway 101 corridor, the safety corridor, as you know, CalChan has been planning an overpass at Indianola Cut Off for probably 20 years now. And we first brought up sea level rise as a concern in 2010 and were ignored, you know, for many years. And now we know that the highway down near Eureka Slough is projected to be flooded on a monthly basis by the year 2030. So, you know, the city wastewater treatment plant is in the process of this, you know, planning a massive upgrade very close to sea level. And it's going to take decades to plan for new things such as a new wastewater treatment plant location, new roadways, new stormwater sewer, transmission lines, all the things that the city can start planning for now. And then also Humboldt Baykeeper strongly supports the idea of no new residential development in areas that we know will be at risk from sea level rise in the not-so-distant future. You know, to put new development, new homes in an area that will have to be protected by seawalls or levees that will only buy in a decade or two seems like poor planning, to put it mildly. And then this idea that David Loyah spoke about with trying to convert some of these, like, you know, the old developments that are fairly polluting today, let alone with sea level rise, on South D Street and converting those to some visitor-serving use, like an RV park, is an intriguing idea that could actually result in cleaning those areas up and allowing their use for some time without, you know, putting residential areas at risk. And so that seems like an interesting idea to explore. So... So, um, I really just, um, hope you'll focus on capital improvements though, because it takes so long. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to more discussion about this.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, checking for Zoom attendees. Last opportunity to speak on this particular item. Seeing no other.
Hey, do we have anyone?
Hello again. David, just a couple things I wanted to stick with your roulette wheel analogy. And I, I think I follow the logic of what you're trying to create to present to the Coastal Commission. My question would be, if you were a betting man, what's the odds they're going to accept this? And then the other question would be devil's advocate. I mean, what do you got to lose? More time and retrying? So, I mean, that's kind of my thoughts on what you presented and, you know, what we're all looking at here. So anyway, any discussion or comments would be great from you at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
So I'll just make it really brief. But, um, I just kind of wanted to bring to your attention that the Eureka waterfront specific plan is following, they say they're going to follow the Coastal Commission's guidelines and take their, their kind of lead on that. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, that other cities are kind of following the Coastal Commission, and they're, it's right on the waterfront. So, um, maybe talk with maybe them and see what their reasonings are, you know, and what the pros and cons are on that. So anyways, I don't think this should be something that we should be taking lightly. I don't think it should be, it just sounds like we're downplaying maybe the, you know, the possibility of when this is going to happen. And, and I think it should be, you know, I think it should be taken more seriously. We're dealing with people's lives and their livelihoods. And, um, uh, and maybe offer a place on other parts of the city where those residents could move their homes. They're actually houses, they're smaller houses. They could easily be relocated to other areas of the city, and that might be a nice, something that we could, you know, think in the future a little bit and kind of protect their property and, and, you know, for future, for the future. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Hi, um, I remember when Jen Cult came in person years ago to talk about planned retreat for the sewage treatment facility. And I, I'm not a gambler, but, um, no matter what, nature bats last. When it does, doesn't kind of really matter sometimes. So when we're looking at what the Coastal Commission's approach is and what we're thinking of, and David said something about, "We do have a retreat plan, but it's more methodical." I'd like it to be more specific. And, um, I really do think that we, no matter when it happens, we really need to start a retreat plan now. You know, start looking at, start planning. And if we're talking about investing a lot of money in improving and protecting our existing wonderful Marsh Sewage Treatment Plant, maybe that is not money best spent. And maybe we really need to just let the marsh go as a recreation and a marvelous wildlife center, um, area, and really start moving in a direction with our sewage treatment elsewhere. Because just spending a lot of money to sort of Band-Aid things when we don't really know, um, you know, when that's going to happen, I just sort of think, "Let's just do it, nature, let nature take over when it's going to take over." And we kind of move back and don't be so, um, you know, important in, in the place that we are. And so if we want to keep people, residents there in the housing on South G and this and that, and, and have regular conversations with them about what's going on with new information, that's fine. But I think things like our infrastructure and the sewage treatment plant, we really need to start looking at evolving it and moving it away from where it is now. It's served a wonderful, um, world-renowned purpose for a period of time, but maybe now it's time to move uphill for a lot of the purposes that the sewage treatment plant had in the marsh area right now. So I'm just thinking Coastal Commission sometimes really knows why they, um, make the calls that they do. So I just want to put that in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, do we have any final comments or questions? Okay, so, thank you. Appreciated the presentation, David. Okay, so next, that takes us to oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. If you are in, in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom, on the webinar, or press star nine if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and when it's your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. We're going to go online first, Kimberly, and then we'll all, so, yeah, you can.
Okay. Checking for online attendees, if anyone wishes to speak at this time. And seeing none.
Sorry, Kimberly, now come back up. I think we have that in there in case there is, in case there is massive amounts of people wanting to comment. We can get everybody in line, but it typically hasn't rolled out that way.
To announce this is on, yes, okay. That Kuna is having a disaster preparedness and community resilience block party this Saturday. We'd like to invite the entire community. It's 11 to 3 at Carlson Park. We'll have such organizations as the Tsunami Work Group, CERT Community Emergency Response Team, Area One on Aging, Tri-County for Independent Living, Disaster Dawn, who specializes in everything on disaster preparedness. We'll also have a group coming in from Los Angeles that will be engaging the community and bringing some games to engage the community on climate resilience. And of course, the Arcade of Fire Department's going to bring their big truck. We will have something for everyone. We have special music guest, Bandemonium. It is a potluck, so don't forget to bring a potluck. And also for children, the Arcade of Playhouse will be bringing the Wonder Wagon. So we just would like to invite everybody to come and learn about disaster preparedness and climate resiliency, get to know your neighbor. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Kimberly. Is there anyone else in person who would like to take this last opportunity for public comment? Okay. So that takes us to council and staff reports. Item A, we have a presentation by Deputy Director of Environmental Services, Emily Bonvy, and Zero Waste Humboldt on the Food Waste Prevention and Rescue Grant Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We have a number of presenters today. Deputy Director Ben V will be presenting via Zoom. And Jenna Boyce, our Environmental Programs aide, will be presenting in person along with members of Zero Waste Humboldt. So I will pass it to Emily and Jenna.
Good evening, Councilmembers and community members. I believe we have a PowerPoint that is going to be shared in the council chambers. Great, thank you, Jenna. So this evening, I am excited to provide a, an overview on our CalRecycle-funded Food Waste Prevention and Rescue Grant Program. This grant was applied for in partnership between the city of Arcata, city of Eureka, at the time Humboldt State University OSNAP, now Cal Poly Humboldt, and Food For People. We had initially written the grant and applied in January of 2019. Next slide, please, Jenna. And, um, sorry, I'm going to squint at my, my screen a little here. I see the, um, the PowerPoint's just a little small on my screen. So we had applied in January of 2019. We were awarded the grant in June of 2019. We started in earnest probably about November of 2019, once we got all the administrative, administrative items sorted out. And then the grant ran from approximately November 2019 until April of 2022. The reason why I'm harping on the dates so much is that, as we all know, the COVID-19 pandemic occurred in, or began in March of 2020. Additionally, Food For People had a major sewage disruption where they lost their facility, their main facility, and had to relocate early on in the grant term as well. So we had dealt with a lot of grant hurdles. However, we were able to adapt and accomplish all of the work planned tasks as well as achieve some additional above and beyond grant milestones. Overall, the grant was about $163,000. It supported eight part-time positions across all the grant partners. Part of the grant activities included developing a bilingual food waste prevention and rescue campaign, which included print, digital, radio, bus ads, and webs, a new website. Initially, we had planned for a lot more in-person outreach. However, with COVID-19, we shifted to mainly radio, digital, and print. Overall, the grants resulted in 273 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions reduced. It resulted in 203 tons of food rescued. It enabled the purchase and lease of cold storage equipment for both Food For People and OSNAP. I wanted to point out that we were able to reallocate some of our grant funds to support Food For People and purchasing additional cold storage equipment than what was originally budgeted for to help respond to some of their facility needs. We increased food rescue capacity across all grant partners as well as really building, um, our relationships among our grant partners. And we were able to hire Zero Waste Humboldt and Juliette Bonan Associates to complete a food rescue capacity assessment as well as some one-on-one, um, business food prevention and rescue outreach, most recently to help bridge that gap that was impacted by COVID-19's prevention of in-person outreach. With that, I will turn it over to Jenna in person, who will speak more specifically to the grant activities.
All right, good evening, everyone. I will jump right in to explain in more detail the project partners and the roles that each of us had. This was a multi-partner collaborative effort. It included, of course, us as the city of Arcata, Food For People, city of Eureka, and Cal Poly Humboldt OSNAP. Each partner had various roles that were really important for incorporating just different parts of the community and, of course, for fulfilling our different tasks on the work plan. As the city of Arcata, we were the primary grant awardee, and we, of course, coordinated with all of the different partners as far as scheduling meetings and just making sure that we were all fulfilling our different tasks. Of course, we also managed the grant administration, which, as Emily was mentioning, was quite, um, you know, it varied throughout the grant project just because of all the unprecedented events. So it was a lot of adapting the work plan, reallocating the budget, and also our regular quarterly reporting duties. And we oversaw the education outreach by ensuring that content that was created by our other partners was going through all the different media outlets that we had contracted with and was uploaded onto our online toolkit and just making sure that we are on task for all of our work plans, tasked. And then we had Food For People. So they, as many of you probably know, are amazing leaders within our local food rescue and recovery community. They're, they've truly been instrumental in just, uh, developing that food network, which is a very tight-knit community. One of the things that they did amazingly was truly respond not only to their sewer inundation event, but also just manage the constant changing, um, safety protocols throughout COVID-19, being leaders in the community and having so many different donor, donation relationships and serving a lot of community members that suffer from food insecurity. I mean, it was so important for them. They played such an important role throughout the last couple of years. And of course, they were able to increase their food rescue capacity throughout the grant period, which was one of our primary goals. One of the reasons we were able to, to do that, among many others, was of course with some additional grant-funded equipment. And we also have, uh, city of Eureka. They were, um, some of their very talented staff led and created our educational materials campaign. We had initially intended for a lot of the education and outreach to be in-person, but it had to really transition and adapt to a lot of online digital media. So they were able to create some really great content that went out in local media outlets. Some of the media outlets we put the materials in were Mad River Union, Time Standard, North Coast Journal, Lost Coast Outpost, and Advanced Sign and Displays, which was the bus advertisement. And they were also stakeholders just in general for the Eureka community, their food rescue and redistribution community there. And we also have Cal Poly Humboldt OSNAP. They were able to lead and design the creation of our online toolkit, which was a website we created called FeedPeopleNotLandfills.net. That has a lot of just information on food rescue and recovery. They also, uh, Cal Poly Humboldt were able to increase their food rescue capacity. They utilized, uh, grant-funded student staffers as well as grant-funded equipment. And again, they were also stakeholders for the student communities and food rescue and redistribution within those communities. Here we have some photos of some grant-funded equipment. So first is the Food For People grant-funded equipment. In total, they have five different units. The first photo shows a built-in walk-in refrigerator. The second photo shows a reefer container. And then the last photo has three different units. It has two refrigerators and a freezer unit. And these were in the Food For People temporary, temporary facility. And then we have the Cal Poly Humboldt OSNAP equipment. In total, they had four grant-funded units, a blast chiller, which is the first photo. And then the last two photos are refrigerators. The middle photo's just one single refrigerator, and then the last photo's two opposite-hinged refrigerators. Next, we have, um, some of our food rescue and greenhouse gas goals. So we were able to exceed all of our projected goals for this, which was really exciting to do throughout this project. Our initial projected food rescued was set at 80 tons, 85 tons, excuse me. And we ended the grant term at 208 tons. Our initial projected greenhouse gas reduction was set at 150 metric tons of greenhouse gases, and we ended at 273 metric tons. So it was really exciting to see at the end of this grant the, what we were able to accomplish with all of our partners. And then we have some photos, um, just showing different donation and redistribution events. So we have a produce bag that was packed by volunteers of Food For People's mobile produce pantry. This produce was gleaned from Green Spiral Farm, which is a common activity that, um, gleaning is a common activity that happens at farms to take excess produce or produce that, produce that can't necessarily be sold and make sure it gets redistributed. Uh, and then on the top, in the right-hand corner, we have Food For People Cowboy Canned Food Convoy. This is one of their, um, large holiday food drives, and it had a really great turnout this past holiday season. Was really important, uh, within the community. And then at the bottom, we have Food For People Operations Manager and a Wildbears Marketplace employee with a donate, pallet, uh, donation. So again, just some examples of the really important community ties and how it all comes together. And then we see just a graph showing the cumulative greenhouse gas emission reductions throughout the grant period. So again, just really, we were, we truly were able to exceed our goals for greenhouse gases, which is nice. There's always more, of course, more work to be done, but it's nice to see it going in a positive trend. We have some examples of educational graphics here. Just two examples, and they're done, of course, are wonderful graphics that were created by city of Eureka staff. This was really important to the grant work because, again, This was really important to the grant work because, again, we really had to adjust and make everything more digital than was initially planned. So the goal was to create visually appealing educational graphics, you know, that were attainable things that could be accomplished by everyday households to prevent food waste. And so the two we have here, one, the top left-hand corner, Don't Let Food Go to Waste. It's about date labels on products and just common misconceptions that surround Best Buy or expiration dates. And then more on the right-hand side of the slide, we have a proper storage techniques graphic, which just details how to best store your food to prevent any unnecessary waste. And both of these graphics were translated by City of Arcata staff. That was also something that was really important to this graph, was trying to be... or to this grant, was using personnel funds to make sure we're making the educational materials reach as broad of an audience as possible and just be as equitable as possible with the grant funds that we had available. And so more graphics such as these were available on our online toolkit, the website, and they also... These two and more went out in all of our local media outlets that we contracted with. And we also, one of the silver linings of all of the unprecedented events was being able to reallocate some funds for the contract work that was done by Zero Waste Humboldt and Juliet Bonn Consulting. So we... Zero Waste Humboldt will go into more detail on the projects they did, but they did... They executed two contracts with us, one being the food rescue capacity assessment, which the goal was to understand the existing food capacity, edible food recovery systems, and the potential locally for additional recovery, as well as the education and outreach contract, which aimed to give one-on-one food waste prevention outreach to Arcata businesses. And the food rescue capacity assessment, which I didn't mention, but the first contract was both for City of Arcata and City of Eureka, and then the second contract was just for City of Arcata. So next, Maggie Gaynor from Zero Waste Humboldt will be introducing some Zero Waste Humboldt team, and they will be talking more on the work they did for the City of Arcata and Cal Recycle Grant.
Thank you, Jenna. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was looking forward to you meeting Lila Richardson, our new Projects Manager for Zero Waste Humboldt. She had an emergency this evening with one of her children, and so we'll have to arrange for that at another time. She just brings a great combination of experience to us and into the work that we do. It is really rare. I've worked in many large metropolitan areas consulting to municipalities and rural counties. It is rare for a remote rural region to have zero waste and sustainable materials management expertise locally. So it's been a real pleasure for me to work with the people I'm going to introduce to you now on this team. Our subcontractor, Juliet Bonn, is an environmental consultant specializing in clean energy and organics recycling. She assists clients with sustainable project development, project management, and permitting. Juliet's been a valued advisor to Zero Waste Humboldt for a long time, since her years as a Humboldt Waste Management Authority Project Manager. Her engineering background and commitment to detail has ensured quality deliverables on these projects for the city. And newer to Humboldt County, our Zero Waste Specialist Shelley Ryder started work in resource recovery in the mid-1980s. She implemented recycling programs for the city and county of San Francisco before working for the City of Millbrae. At the City of Millbrae for more than 20 years, she initiated and managed a variety of environmental programs, including waste prevention, recycling, composting, and climate protection. Among Bay Area groups, working in zero waste, Shelley has a reputation for being very knowledgeable and a great person to work with. We're really fortunate that she moved to Humboldt just a little over a year ago. Next slide, please, and Juliet, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Maggie, and good evening to everyone. As Jenna mentioned, the purpose of the 2021 Edible Food Recovery Assessment was to understand how much edible food is currently being recovered and how much capacity there is to expand edible food recovery services. We began by reviewing the work conducted by the Humboldt Food Policy Council, which was formed to focus on food access in Humboldt County. According to the Food Policy Council, food insecurity is defined as households that have encountered difficulty at some time in the past year providing enough food for all household members. In 2018, the rate of food insecurity in Humboldt County was found to be 18%, which is higher than both the state and federal levels. Many families and individuals in Humboldt County face a choice between rent and food, and food assistance helps them stay housed. Given the known impacts of food insecurity and community health and well-being, the need for expanding local edible food recovery cannot be overstated, and this, in fact, is the reason that SB 1383 includes a target for maximizing edible food donations as part of the largest strategy to keep food waste out of landfills. Thankfully, we are lucky to have a strong network of food recovery organizations in Humboldt County led by Food for People. In 2020, Food for People and their network of gleaners and volunteers rescued and distributed 93 tons of edible food that would otherwise have ended up in the landfill. Every food recovery organization reported that they can accept and distribute additional donated food. Food for People estimates a doubling of food distribution services would be required to meet the current level of need in the county. Next slide, please. The second step in assessing edible food recovery capacity was to survey all food recovery organizations and as many food businesses as we could reach to understand the current landscape of food donations. As you can see on the right-hand side of this chart, there are eight organizations that accept food donations in the Arcata and Eureka jurisdictions. This slide also shows where the current edible food recovery is coming from. We learned that grocery stores and warehouse stores such as Costco are the major sources of edible food donations, and all stores have a long history of making weekly donations and often multiple weekly donations. Wholesale food vendors and food distributors were found to make donations on an as-needed basis, but also directly donate unsellable products to employees. Only a minority of restaurants make donations, but the majority give excess food to employees, take food home to their families, or give food directly to hungry people. Hospitals, large events, and schools were found to make up only a small portion of food donations, with the exception of Cal Poly Humboldt, which has historically worked closely with OSNAP, the food recovery organization on campus. Finally, the local food producers or farms are noted here as they provide quite a bit of gleaned food. While this food is not necessarily bound for the landfill, local farms were found to play an important role in helping the demand, me helping to meet the demand for food assistance in our community. Next slide, please. In order to answer the broader question about the capacity to expand food recovery, we looked to the most recent waste characterization study that estimated 53 tons per year of potentially recoverable food in the Arcata commercial sector and 296 tons per year of potentially recoverable food in the Eureka commercial sector. I've also included the estimates for the non-potentially donatable food on this slide, so you can see that the vast majority of the food being thrown away is not recoverable. Next slide, please. The waste characterization study data indicates that the edible food currently being thrown away would go a long way towards meeting the remaining need in Humboldt County. Using the SB 1383 target of a 20% increase in edible food recovery, Arcata and Eureka could recover an additional 77 tons per year combined. A doubling of the quantity of edible food recovered by the Food for People Network, or an additional 93 tons per year, is equal to about 27% of the recoverable edible food estimated to remain in the Arcata and Eureka commercial waste streams. The key takeaway here is that there is ample opportunity to recover additional edible food that will help achieve SB 1383 compliance and, more importantly, increase food security in our community. However, in order to achieve and sustain this level of increase in edible food recovery, the food recovery organizations will need public, private, and community support. Types of support needed include additional dry and cold storage space, such as the cold storage that Emily and her team are able to procure, additional refrigerated trucks to expand gleaning routes, and sustainable sources of funding for staff and operations. With this in mind, I would now like to turn it over to Shelley, who will be talking about the outreach conducted to food businesses. Thank you. Shelley?
Thank you, Juliet, and good evening. The second part of the project was conducted from January through the end of February of this year and consisted of conducting outreach to food generating businesses in the city to provide owners and managers with information and resources on preventing food waste, on where to donate edible food, as well as how to track it, on the farmers that collect food waste as animal feed, as well as on the current compost collection services and the materials they accept. We reached out to over 100 food generating businesses, and that included six grocery stores, seven food vendors, 50 restaurants, 12 schools, four hotels, and six of the largest event planners, as well as 13 caterers and the Mad River Community Hospital. We met with 55 of these businesses in person, and I just have to say that the businesses were fantastic and we really enjoyed talking with them. And in spite of COVID, the businesses were very interested and receptive to the information we were providing. We asked the businesses about their current food donation practices as well as waste prevention efforts, and we asked about their recycling to be comprehensive so that we could benchmark all of their current practices. Next slide, please. We provided the city with a benchmark of all of the businesses, and we included a detailed database and waste reduction and outreach tracking tool and a comprehensive report with recommendations. Each of the businesses, whether we met with them in person or we talked with them on the phone, we gave them an information packet, and that included an introductory letter from the city informing them about the project as well as Zero Waste Humboldt's involvement. We also gave a food waste prevention information sheet, and that was in English and in Spanish, and it had a lot of resource information on where and how to donate edible food, on the compost collectors. And on the reverse side, we had a record-keeping template to be able to track edible food donations. We also created and provided a handy refrigerator magnet, and this included a summary chart of the edible food recovery organizations and the compost collection service providers. And on the screen on the lower right, you'll see an image of the magnet. And on the next page, you'll see the information sheet. Next slide, please. We also... The project also included creating a webpage on the Zero Waste Humboldt website dedicated to business food waste reduction resources and information. We also identified farmers who currently collect food scraps for animal feed, as well as those that would be willing to collect it. We created a few videos, we took many pictures, and we're featuring these exemplary businesses on social media. We also conducted a waste sort at the Sunny Bra Murphy's Market, and we provided them with a comprehensive report and recommendations. We placed an announcement in the Chamber of Commerce newsletter, and last, we coordinated with the Humboldt County Public Health Department for both of the projects that were mentioned this evening. Thank you very much, and I'll pass this back to Maggie Gaynor.
Hi, folks. Do you have any questions for us before I wrap up?
I don't know. I was gonna say no questions, but I mean, no questions because that was just so comprehensive and just thank you so much for all the great work that you guys have done. It's really amazing to, you know, see the numbers and see, you know, how we have helped make the world a little bit of a better place with this grant money. So thank you, guys, and thank you for the great presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as well. That was a wonderful presentation. And to Food for People, thank you. When I lived in Orleans, which is ostensibly a food desert, I remember when the Food for People van used to come and what a lifesaver it was for so many families in rural eastern Humboldt. So thank you again for all your hard work and what you do. So much appreciated.
I did have a question. Again, wonderful, yes, thank you. And so because it was so successful and you exceeded your goals and everything, what is the next step? Because obviously, the grant's done, but you learned a lot. So how will you be using this information to continue on with this, towards these goals?
I think Emily will have, from the city's perspective, I can quickly summarize. Right now, we're launching into a similar project with all the schools, zeroing in on some pilot zero-waste model schools. And we have an opportunity for significant funding that is sort of the next step to begin working more closely, programs that are smaller portions in restaurants. You just keep drilling down. And so there's always more work to do.
So I would assume, yeah, there were some different habits created by these different business owners and entities on how to do things differently? Are they... Do they have the infrastructure in place to continue this beyond the program on their own?
There'll be a need for ongoing touching bases with them. We follow a pretty standard accepted by everybody EPA hierarchy of... And this is what we presented to in our discussions with all of the food generating businesses and schools, all of the types. At the top is waste prevention, food waste prevention, and then getting food, edible food to people who need it, and then to farm animals, and then down to composting for the soil, and then safe disposal. So you want to have as little as at the bottom. So that's the priority order of all the different kinds of activities. And yeah, every time there's a new manager, you almost have to start over in some businesses, getting it institutionalized so that it's in everybody's job description. It's ongoing.
Thank you, Maggie.
I can jump in a little bit from city staff perspective. I think operationally, the grant had purchased some equipment infrastructure, so that infrastructure will continue to be in place, as well as had assisted with recruiting new food donors for Food for People. And so those food donors, in theory, will continue to exist. So that's the real operational piece. Zero Waste Humboldt's work around the food rescue capacity assessment ties into SB 1383 requirements, which I won't spend too much time talking about tonight, because we will be coming back to council next month with a greater overview there. But it certainly helps set the stage in achieving some of our 1383 compliance, both from the recovery assessment, recovery capacity assessment, and from doing some of the education and outreach work. And then the last piece that I really want to touch on as long-lasting impact is the relationships that this grant had created. So prior to pulling together and applying for the grant, certainly, we had worked with Zero Waste Humboldt before, as well as Food for People, City of Eureka, and OSNAP. But through this grant work, and particularly through weathering all the different challenges over the course of the grant and adapting to different changes and working as a real collaborative team, I feel like the relationships that were strengthened through the course of that work will pay dividends in the long term. So I really wanted to touch on that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily, and I know that I'm so proud of the restaurants that you guys have formed relationships with, and I know that we're talking about food waste right now, but now that we've established such great relationships with these restaurants, it'd be wonderful, moving forward, if we could also get them to focus on disposable flatware and to-go items and kind of have that be a next logical step.
Could I just say that this month, we celebrate Earth Day, Earth Week all month long, and environmentalists don't do a particularly great job of celebrating because there's so much to do. And in Arcata, one of the pleasures in working with the city of Arcata and its staff over time is that, and this was the case in this immediate grant program, it's about more than just meeting minimal compliance and really going for it. And I just want you to know, the staff continues this tradition, and it's been a pleasure to work with Environmental Services. So thank you for the opportunity to do what we do best and work for our mission of zero waste.
Well, we will celebrate you and your staff. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, everyone, for listening to our presentation. We appreciate it. It was a pleasure to do this work.
Do we have any other staff updates? Okay, how about council member updates?
I have a Cooperation Humboldt update. The food, the local food guide is out. It's been worked on really hard, and it's wonderful. I encourage you to look out for it. It should be everywhere, but if you need a special copy, let me know. As far as chamber events, I'd like to take the opportunity to publicly acknowledge and celebrate Molly Steele, who is resigning as the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. She gracefully led the chamber through COVID-19 and has implemented so much with the great Board Directors of the Chamber. So thank you, and I would be remiss if I did not express my heartfelt sympathies and condolences to Donna Wright, who was the Executive Director of the Eureka Chamber of Commerce, who passed, so.
Do you have any advice, Mayor? Okay, then I will just jump in really, really quickly. The rain's getting quieter, maybe it will be a little bit eased up by the end of this, and then we can all get out of here. Arcata Main Street, we did like a board development training, and it was really beneficial. We spent several hours last week in the evening coming up with scope of work for Main Street for the next two years, which is really exciting, and they will actually be coming before us in the near future as we're getting ready for budgeting to discuss some of their needs. So just to prep you for that. And then I had the Homelessness and Housing Committee meeting today, and there was a lot of celebrations in that, which was fun. You know, we don't often, I think in government, celebrate a lot either because there's, seems like you accomplish one thing and there's five others that you should have, you know, wished you got to. But we celebrated both of the Home Key projects moving forward in the Valley West area, which was exciting. And also, the Safe Parking Program is up and running, and it is going really well. And we did discuss the vehicles that are still out front, and although it's taking a little bit longer to get that area cleaned up, it still is in progress. And it has not been forgotten about, and that is not the Safe Parking Program. That is beyond that. So just wanted to let everyone know about that. For dates, oh, go ahead.
So Friday is Earth Day, so everybody celebrate that by being good to the earth. Also, Arcata Main Street is having their May Day celebration on May 1st. It's going to be wonderful. And also on Friday, Redwood Coast Energy Authority is celebrating their five-year anniversary of being our community choice aggregator, so I'd just like to throw out some congratulations for them as well. And this rain, right? It's wonderful.
Okay, then I won't be complaining about that. So dates of future meetings. So we do have on Wednesday, May 25th, at 5:30, we've got a budget overview study session that will be here in council chambers. We have a study session with committee chairs Tuesday, May 31st, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And not on the agenda or date of future meetings, but not forgotten, is that very important council and Planning Commission collaboration meeting regarding the gateway. So that is, that will be, that will be coming up as soon as we can get it figured out, how to make that happen. So with that, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.